Boy, I'd like to see our council meetings starting like this every time. Anyways, welcome folks to the special council meeting of Monday, September 30th. Looking to call the meeting to order and approval of the agenda?
Just a second.
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? We do have a number of presentations and acknowledgements this evening, so bear with me, folks. The first will be our Pay It Forward presentation. We have two members here with us, and I would like to -- I believe Brandon's not available tonight, but I think his dad's here to accept on his behalf. So Forrest, if you are in the audience somewhere? There you go. Alrighty. Brandon is a lifetime resident of the city of Colwood. He started taking dance lessons when he was three at Wondafuka Recreation Centre and then moved on to the West Shore Dance Studio where he danced there until the age of 12. He's danced in various community events as part of their performing group. Attending Cole John Stubbs Memorial School, he learned to play piano when he was eight and took his grade eight piano exam in August 2013. He also plays trumpet and plays with the West Shore Community Concert Band when he was 10 through 12. At 12, Brandon has been accepted into the Royal Winnipeg Ballet School Professional Division and has been studying there 10 months a year since. He now attends the University of Winnipeg Collegiate for his academic studies, 16 years old and in grade 11. Recently, while home on summer recess, Brandon found out that the pianist who was supposed to be supporting our St. John's Centennial celebrations this summer would be unable to fulfill their obligation. Without hesitation, Brandon volunteered his services and within a very short period of time mastered the music for the hymns sung at the centennial church service attended by the Lieutenant Governor, our council, and many other members of the community, and also the wedding march for the nuptials that were held that day. So if Forrest Lockhart could please step forward, and I'd be happy to make this presentation. This next individual was on the keyboard this evening while we were mixing and mingling out there. So Rachel Lee. Rachel has been studying piano since she was seven. She has consistently achieved first-class honors with distinction on her piano exams, the highest classification from the Royal Conservatory of Music, and is currently working on her RCM level nine. In 2012, Rachel was presented with the Susan Papadjon Memorial Award by the B.C. Registered Music Teachers Association for the highest level seven piano achievement in Victoria. She was invited to perform at the annual luncheon for the Victoria chapter of the B.C. Registered Music Teachers Association. Rachel's repertoire includes classical, baroque, romantic, and 20th and 21st century contemporary music. Rachel has performed in many different events and competitions, both solo and as an accompanist. She is currently studying with Pam Smurl at PJ Music Studios and has most recently played Maple Leaf Rag and the hymn "All Things Bright and Beautiful" in support of the Four Seasons Musical Theatre at the St. John Baptist Church. Rachel? Come on. It's your turn. I have to let you know that Brandon and Rachel's extraordinary musical talents were singled out for praise and recognition by the Lieutenant Governor during her opening speech at the centennial celebrations, and their generous contribution to the community of Colwood is being recognized this evening by the Pay It Forward program. So thanks to both of those young individuals in our community. Moving forward, we also have at this time a presentation from our local MLA, Maureen Caraginis, if you'd like to come, and the podium is there.
Great. Thank you very much, Your Worship and Council. And please let me add my congratulations to your Pay It Forward program. It was wonderful listening to Rachel play, and I had a moment to talk with her father there. So congratulations to Rachel and to Brandon for the Pay It Forward. I, as you know, from time to time, like to come and meet with my councils. I've met with the city of Victoria. I've got to View Royal coming up tomorrow and Esqymalt next week. And it seemed a fitting time to come as there's no sitting of the legislature this fall, so I have a little bit of time on my hands. So I thought I'll come and visit my municipalities. Despite the fact that the legislature's not sitting, of course, there is always lots of work to do as your MLA. I wanted to bring a couple of ideas forward to you, and I also wanted to give you a little bit of an update on my current critic portfolios and how they might relate to the community here. So I am currently serving as the opposition critic for childcare, for women's issues, and for shipbuilding. And I know they sound a little incongruous, but in fact, of course, shipbuilding is pretty important in the heart of our constituency, in Esqymalt in particular. And I am taking up the cause of trying to encourage the government to look at choosing shipbuilding here in our province and here in our community for the new ferry builds. So it is going to be an ongoing push on my part this fall is to try and encourage government to look at our local industry and looking at a triple bottom-line approach to the new ferry builds, because I certainly believe that our companies can be very competitive if we look at not only cost factors, but also social impact and benefits as well as environmental impact. And I'd love to see those jobs kept here in our communities and here on the West Coast. So as part of my shipbuilding portfolio, I'll be spending a bit of energy on that. The portfolios for childcare and women's issues continue to be really important. Childcare seems to be a piece that would fit very closely in with the jobs plan that the government is currently in putting a lot of initiative into. And I think that childcare is a critical part of that, so I'm going to be working very closely to encourage the government to expand childcare and make sure that anyone who wants to get back into the workforce is not in any way hampered by the inability to access affordable childcare. Women's issues, of course, tend to be, they fall into the areas of right now, concern about domestic violence, violence against women, the recent Wally Opal report, and ensuring that we try and follow all of the recommendations that Mr. Opal has put forward. So I've already talked to the government in the short little sitting we had in July. I will be bringing some questions and concerns to the government once we're sitting again in February. So if there's anything that you find in your communities, any stakeholders that you feel that I should be engaged with, please let me know, and let them know that those are the critic duties that I have currently. I wanted to talk about something that my office has undertaken. Some of you may know about it. I produce a series of signs called "Slow Down Kids Matter," and we have contacted all of the schools in the constituency as well as any other stakeholders who might be interested. We give the signs away for free, and there's been always a great uptake. Currently, a lot of the schools are taking these signs and displaying them in their neighborhoods. So again, if there's anyone in your community that you can think of that might benefit from having these signs that say "Slow Down Kids Matter," then I'd be happy to give those out. The last piece that I wanted to talk about is an idea that I have brought forward to the city of Victoria. I'm going to be talking about it with all the other councils as well. It has to do with a piece of property that the Capital Regional District purchased in the heart of Esqymalt on Viewfield Road, and that property is now no longer being considered for sewage treatment. But in recent discussions with the Film Commission, Commissioner of Victoria, it came to light that there is a need here and a desire for some kind of soundstage or soundstudio in greater Victoria. As you may know, we've currently been competing with communities as far away as Ontario and all over the U.S. for film jobs and for film locations. Brings hundreds of millions of dollars into the economy here. We've benefited very much here on Vancouver Island. But with the erosion of film jobs going out of the province around the discussions on tax credits, we're looking for opportunities to make it more attractive to come here to Victoria. So I understand from talking with the Film Commissioner that there are a couple of really pretty significant series, film series, that could come here right now. One of the enticements that we could put forward that might just kind of tip the balance in our favor would be to have soundstage capabilities. So in discussion with the Film Commissioner, she brought up the issue of the Wilson Foods location, and I said, "Well, you know, the CRD does own that, and it's currently not going to be used for anything." So I would like all councils to maybe give some consideration to meeting with the Film Commission and exploring the idea of possibly using this building for a soundstage. If, in fact, it becomes an asset that benefits the economy of the region and helps to tip the balance our way for more of those film jobs, I think it'd be a great asset and might turn what is a bit of a controversial building site into a huge asset and a huge win for the community. So I'm hoping that if it's of interest to you, that you might connect with the Film Commissioner and think about having this discussion at the CRD. I'm going to talk to all the other councils about it, and I intend on approaching the CRD as well. And I'm hoping that we can seize on this kind of a lemon of a situation that's come out of the Viewfield site and turn it into something really advantageous for all of us. So thank you very much for your time, and I don't know if you're going to entertain questions or not, Carol, or if council has anything immediate. Counsel Martin?
Thank you. I just have one quick question, just because you brought it up, the road sewer treatment.
Yes.
And as you're aware, that, you know, Colwood, right now, we only have about 17% of our residents are on sewers, and yet the CRD's planning on charging us as though we have 100%.
Right.
And I'm wondering where you are from a constituent standpoint, because Colwood falls within that. How, what are you planning on doing to advocate for Colwood on that behalf?
I've got to be honest with you. I have not had very many residents of Colwood approach me on that specific aspect of it. I've got to say, the sewage treatment discussion seems to be overwhelmed with kind of the battle that's gone on downtown between Esqymalt and its neighbors and Victoria and all of that. I mean, I think that the process for the whole region is fatally flawed at this point. I think that the lack of consultation and lack of common sense in the whole sewage treatment discussion has not allowed for issues like yours to be dealt with more fairly. And certainly, I hear complaints all the time from all the communities around the lack of consultation and clarity on what we're doing and why we're doing it. I've met with Mayor Carroll several times on this and with Judith Cuddlington. I have not heard this particular discussion before, so I don't really have anything really informed to say about it, but I'd be happy to pursue it a bit further. Anybody else? Good. No? Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thanks, folks. Moving on to item number four in our agenda, which has to do with the reason why we have such attendance here this evening and our uniformed fire department. We don't want them getting any calls while we're going on this, so we're going to get through to this one. Change of command. We're here because our long-serving fire chief is handing over the reins to a very well-fought-of member of our own fire department, so things are looking good. So I'm going to call on Counselor Gordy Logan, who is our Chair of Protective Services, to say a few words. I will say a few words, and then we will bring Chief Cameron to the podium to effect the change.
Thank you, Your Worship. I did have a few words prepared tonight, and I thought, "Well, heck with this. I'm going to toss those out the window." And I have a look around the room, and I think, you know, what an exceptional, exceptionally talented group of people. And I know, talking to Chief Smith and to Chief Cameron, they recognize in each and every one of you a twinkle of leadership. And I mention that because it's the leadership that has allowed the department to grow and to become part of the community and allow the department to carry on after, during the transition. And you should know that your council is extremely proud of you, and we recognize the value that you bring to the community. And from our perspective, I just want to say thank you. Now to Chief Cameron and Chief Smith. Chief Smith, it's now your turn to keep my butt out of the proverbial sling. So I'm sure Chief Cameron is happy to hand those rings over to you, those reins over to you. But I want to say that we've been through a lot together. We've gone through the reinvention of the fire station. We've become a model of the community and in the region by enacting an auto-aid agreement with our friends in View Royal, which still stands out as one of the best. And we've taken on other leadership roles within the community and really stood out. And I think that culture is prevalent everywhere within the region. I want to say to you, Carrie, that you have our utmost trust and respect, and I can tell you that this council and myself will be behind you 125% going forward. And knowing where the city of Colwood is going in the future, we are about to grow, and there's going to be new challenges and new opportunities. And I'm excited that you're going to be the one that's going to be leading the department. And I'm very proud, very proud of where we've been and where we are about to go in the next number of years. So welcome.
Thank you. And I'm going to, as we say on council, Gordy, you stole my thunder. I think you were reading my notes. But I'm going to go, and just in case he's missed something in here, so I want to acknowledge everybody that's come tonight to participate in this, and including Chief Hurst from our neighboring View Royal. Thank you, Chief, for coming. Today, the city of Colwood's fire department's longest-serving leader will pass the torch. When you look at the department's many accomplishments, over the more than 24 years Chief Cameron has been in command, his exemplary leadership is apparent. During his command, Chief Cameron has continually enhanced the safety and quality of life in Colwood, giving back to the community he was raised in and inspiring others to do the same. His dedication, integrity, experience, and intention to detail has been the driving force behind the Colwood Fire Department and has firmly established it as a leading force in the region. The department's success is due in part to the Chief Cameron's leadership. He has held the department to high standards because he knows the quality of service his dedicated and expertly-trained members are capable of. We will be sorry to lose Chief Cameron. He has been a great leader, colleague, and friend. The city is grateful for his years of service, and he will forever be remembered as part of our community's proud history. At the same time, the city will be gaining a truly great leader in Carrie Smith. Deputy Chief Carrie Smith, now Chief Smith coming forward, is part of the fabric of the Colwood community and is respected throughout the province as a steady and thoughtful leader. Having worked closely with Chief Cameron and the Colwood Fire Department for the past number of years, Chief Smith will make the change in command an easy transition. He is familiar with the department's goals and operations, and his deep respect for the members of the department is evident. The Smith family has a proud firefighting history. Carrie's father, who is here with us tonight, was the founding director of the Justice Institute of B.C. Fire Academy and has had many years of service as the member of the Sanage Fire Department. Carrie and his wife, Kim, have two grown boys, Kyle and Nicholas. Kyle is currently serving as a member of our department along with his dad. Carrie joined our fire department in 1990 after serving with Central Sanage Fire Department as an instructor with the B.C. Fire Academy. He has been instrumental in reinforcing the importance of standardizing training in the B.C. fire service and ensuring Colwood Fire Department training is top-notch. He's held the rank of Assistant Fire Chief and was promoted to Deputy Fire Chief, and we are happy to welcome him as our new commander-in-chief today. Please join me in welcoming Carrie to our fold. And Chief Cameron, can we proceed with that change in command?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests that are here tonight. Tonight marks a significant moment in the city and for the fire department. This moment will make memories for the Smith and Eastgate families here with us tonight as one of their own is about to be appointed fire chief. History will also be made this evening, as this is the first time that Colwood, as an incorporated city, will oversee the change of command of the fire department with the appointment of a new fire chief. I have been fortunate to have been raised, schooled, and to have worked and played in the community that I love. I am proud to have served this community in the footsteps of my grandfather and father as a Colwood firefighter. In total, my family has provided 51 years of service to this community, something that we are proud of and feel that we have made contribution to the lives of others. I would like to thank my wife and family for being behind me always and enduring the inconveniences and nuances of being a public figure. I am forever grateful for your love and support. Madam Mayor, Council, I am comfortable that I have left the Colwood Fire Department well-positioned for the future with excellent career staff, dedicated, hard-working volunteer members, and the development of a new leader that is capable of reaching new goals for the department. I am proud with the appointment of my friend Carrie Smith as chief. Members of the Colwood Fire Department, work hard and be proud. Look after your new fire chief, and your chief will look after you. Assistant Chief Cassidy, call the department to attention, please.
Fire Department, attention.
Mayor Hamilton, Counselor Logan, please join me at the front. Ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Colwood, members of the department, I give you your new leader, Fire Chief Carrie Smith.
We'll pause here for a moment, folks. For those of you who are part of the fire department group that can make your way, there's probably more cake and stuff out there. If you want to help yourself on your way out, by all means, go right ahead.
Yeah, I have a minute.
Alright. Folks, thanks for sticking with us as we move forward here. It is the time for public participation, so it's the opportunity for any of you that are here in the audience this evening that want to step forward and say a few words, by all means, do so. The microphone is there. We are live for webcast taping, so please, if you want to give your name to the clerk either audibly or on a paper, whichever is your preference, but come on forward. Anybody with something? Dwayne, it's your first time back for months. Nothing?
No.
Come on. We missed you.
I've got a little hold of you.
Oh, gosh.
So ready to go.
Anyone else, folks? Anyone in there? Okay, fine. We'll move forward, then. Mayor's message. Wow, it's kind of hard to top off what we just did there, but I think I will do just a bit of a catch-up over the last little bit. We had put down our council meeting to today because we were all away at UBCM. So there is a double honors award that Colwood has received at UBCM, one through Climate and Energy Action. We won honorable mention for our solar Colwood program. Community Excellence Award, we won in our Division IV, our solar Colwood initiatives. Our Colwood brand-new website, for all of those of you in the public who are paying attention to what we're doing, has accomplished a silver award through the government in its content and readability and information. We have recently, actually, it was just today, right? The Real Estate Foundation Land Awards. We are one of three public sector finalists. That one is coming forward. We're not sure when, that's not till the end of October, some, yeah, end of October that that one will come through. We also got recognition, came forward today out of, we are one of eight B.C. neighborhoods in Canada's Top 100 for Promising Growth. So there's a whole website, all this stuff will be up on our website that you can click into and go and read about those kinds of things that are going on. So we're getting noticed, folks. This one here is to do with the, what is, Verico Mortgage Broker's Key Investment Successes. So it's important that we keep raising our profile, and we do that through the hard work of everybody in our community. So that's all I have, I think, on, oh, no, we have another one that went into my notes here. West Shore Chamber of Commerce on Friday night had their community awards, and we were the recipient of the Healthy Communities Award for our User-Friendly Trails Map Initiative. So that one's also up on our website. You can go to that one and see what they've done in regards to the trails and things that are in our local area out here. So there's those, and I'm sure there's more to come. Moving on to our minutes, looking to adopt the minutes of regular council meeting of September 9th.
So moved.
All those in favor? Counselor Day has, sorry, just, no point.
I was not able to be here at that council meeting, and I just wanted to bring to our attention that not all the decisions were unanimous, and there's a few occasions where there's no information in the minutes as to what the discussion was and why someone might not have supported the motion, and I just think that would be good information for our public. I know we're trying to keep our minutes brief, but I think just a little bit to give us some idea what the issue might have been would be helpful to myself and others who might not be able to attend.
Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? Looking to receive minutes for the following: Emergency Planning Committee, May 28; Emergency Planning Committee, July 16; Finance and Admin, August 19; Heritage Advisory Commission, June 12; Planning and Land Use, September 3; Protective Services, June 12.
We proceed.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried? Moving into new business, item 8.1.1, memo there in regards to request for funding from the solar Colwood program to, for Counselor Judith Cuddlington to attend the Pacific Northwest International Section of the Air and Waste Management Association Conference, to which she's been invited to speak.
Would you like me to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So this is a request for council's support. I do get invited from time to time to speak about the solar Colwood program, and I try and take advantage of it when I can because I think it's a good opportunity to profile our community, and usually I manage to get my speaking and travel costs covered. This particular one is in Victoria. This particular one is in Victoria, but they do ask the speakers to pay for admission. So the cost of a one-day registration is $225. We have confirmed with Natural Resources Canada that this is a legitimate cost that we can claim out of the Solar Callwood Clean Energy Fund, so there isn't a taxpayer impact on this. And so I'm asking for council's support to allow me to attend that conference on our behalf, using monies from that fund. And there is a wording for a recommendation there. Probably better if somebody else moves it.
Yeah, so we need a recommendation on that and a second, or and then discussion?
I would move the recommendation as in the report, that we support a payment of $225 from the Solar Callwood budget to cover Councilor Cullington's registration fee at the Pacific Northwest International Section of the Air and Waste Management Association Conference in November to enable her to present the Solar Callwood program. And my reason for supporting that is that I think it is a benefit to the residents of Callwood that the program receive as much uptake as possible so that there's as much support as possible out there for the initiative.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Council? Seeing nothing further, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries?
Thank you.
Moving on then to Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee, Works and...
No.
Oops, pardon me, skipped right over there. I moved my, Planning and Land Use, 8.2.1, Redevelopment Variance Permit, DVP 1213, 302, 304, 320, 322, 24, Belmont Road. Staff, were you going to make comment on this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The development variance permit in question pertains to properties, five in total, on Belmont Road, at 302, 304, 320, 322, and 324 Belmont Road. The nature of the variance requested amounts to a reduction in parking from 196 spaces to 144. This application results from a situation dating back to 2008, when the council of the day approved in principle the subject parking variance to be implemented in the eventual development permit for the project. The project, however, did not proceed any further until 2012. Unfortunately, it has since been determined that development permits cannot be used to implement variances of this type. Therefore, the development variance permit on the agenda tonight is necessary to give force and effect to the 2008 council approval. Thank you.
Councilor Harvey?
Thank you. So I will move that Development Variance Permit, DVP 1213, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying the required number of parking stalls for residential multi-family use from 1.5 per dwelling unit plus 1 per 100-meter-square of building floor area exceeding 60 meters squared times the number of dwelling units to 1.5 per dwelling unit.
Second.
Comments, questions from council? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Now to Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee, Works and Services required by the subdivision servicing agreement for Veterans Memorial Parkway and Resolution I'm just going to, this is no decision at this time by members of council. This is simply, if on your agenda, you saw the gray note on here, so I will make it public in that the September 9th, 2013, regular meeting of council, the following item was discussed, and council resolved to issue the notice of intention and to consider the September 4th Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee recommendation. It was noted at that meeting that the city would issue a notice of the development variance permit, and the issue would come directly back to council instead of going through committee on September 30th. Unfortunately, staff were unable to issue the required notices within the timeline to bring this issue to council for further consideration at the September 30th special meeting. Therefore, the city engineer is preparing a report relevant to this agenda item, which will be considered at a special Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October 9th, and the TPI committee's recommendation will be presented to council at its regular meeting scheduled for Monday, October 28th. So we're simply just standing everything down till that happens?
That's correct.
Okay. So we can move on? There's no decision on this one?
Can I just ask why we weren't able to issue the notices?
That's entirely my fault. My instructions to staff were not complete enough, and there was a misunderstanding as to what needed to be done. The notices have gone out now for both the 9th of October and the council meeting following.
Okay, and the applicant was made aware of this, is that correct?
I would hope so, but I'm wondering if his presence in the audience means that he wasn't, in which case we failed twice on this one. A new process for us, and I'm sorry, we'll get it right in the future.
Moving forward then to item number 9.1, bylaw number 1517, final reading for Callwood Main to enlarge the local service bylaws for 495 Dressler.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. 9.2, this is final reading of Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service and Establishment and Loan Authorization for the same property.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Motion to move in camera?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried.